Sagarino on the cardboard updates.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can we go to Selectmen Priest to read the old uh,
I'm sorry.
Beginning of the meeting stuff first?
It's right there.
He's gonna be upset if he doesn't get to read this again.
It's my shining moment, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Nick, only a couple more years and we'll be all set.
All right, here we go. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the opening law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington Boris left is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BCAT Government Cable Access Television, BCAT Government Covered Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9888, meeting number 1790499919. Members of the public attend, uh, this virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so. During the virtual meeting, designated for public comment by commenting on the BCAT Government Covers Facebook Live page, the chat function, the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we do have a public hearing this evening. Uh, so Selectmen Priest will be monitoring the comments on Facebook Live and the WebEx chat, and I will monitor the phone line at 781-270-1635. And just as a reminder to the board, uh, all votes are required to be done by roll call for the virtual meeting.
Thank you, sir.
First item up, Mr. Chairman, uh, the board had requested an update on the cardboard dumpsters behind the town hall. Uh, we have our Public Works Director, John Sanchez, here to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Sanchez.
So, uh, ju- just a couple of quick notes, uh, uh, I met with the subcommittee, um, I believe it was January 25th to go over, uh, the issues to do with the, uh, cardboard dumpster. Uh, we had some conversations about what what we should be doing, uh, in the future. And part of it was to get, uh, signs, uh, next to the dumpsters stating that, uh, uh, what don't we say, that any type of littering, uh, will be, uh, sent to the police for, uh, further, uh, I don't want to call it prosecution, but pretty much to say like, police take notice if there's any littering, it will be fined issued. So we, we have those signs on order right now. We ordered them a couple of weeks ago. We, we hope to be getting them soon. And then at that point, uh, whether it's through, again, my subcommittee and the public works or through the board, um, a vote would need to be taken or to recommend that we actually stole those signs. In the meantime, though, I have to report that this inclusion is a lot better right now. Uh, you know, we, we did, uh, change, uh, some of the signage that we had there, uh, as far as the handmade signs that we had. Uh, and over the last few weeks, uh, it has improved dramatically. But we continue to empty the dumpsters three times a week. Uh, but there seems to be a little more compliance, uh, from our residents, uh, later. So. That's all I have to report on.
All right, um, Nick, any comments?
Uh, yeah. Was that to me? Sorry.
Yes, Mr. Priest, I'm sorry. Yes, you.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Um, just, uh, in terms of where the conversation netted out, I know that when we spoke last, um, there was a conversation around having a sign that, uh, displayed the pickup towns, the days, the days of the week, and impossible improved camera. Um, uh, do we feel like the, the camera is sufficient for now and that the grave o- only is warranted down, down the line?
Uh, so if that's a question for me, uh, Nick, the decision, we did talk about it, but a decision was not made on whether or not to, to put the sign up there, uh, for, for dropping off hours. So I, I think that, uh, we're gonna have those, uh, signs indicating that people have, you know, are, they're videotaped. Uh, and, and hopefully that will, uh, be the first step. And then I guess, if that doesn't work, then, uh, I guess we'll have to meet again and decide what the next step will be.
Okay. And my other comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, is, you know, John, I remember when we spoke last, we talked about like the, the peak windows, right? Obviously this year has been wild. You know, like leading into the holidays slash post holidays and, you know, even like around graduation time. Uh, you know, just as a thought to consider, maybe increase communication ahead of those times. This is a reminder to folks, um, as, you know, as we enter whatever season, you know, dumpsters fill up quick, please don't, you know, uh, be a, a, a public nuisance.
Yeah, we certainly don't do that on our social media.
Awesome. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rennie.
No, no, satisfied with, uh, uh, Mr. Sanchez's report.
Uh, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, John, thanks for your efforts on this. Uh, I did, just a brief comment on, um, you know, I've no, I've noticed on a few of the social media sites, uh, residents have, uh, have, uh, also voiced their concerns about the messes left behind and they've kind of, uh, policed themselves for, for, uh, to an extent. So I know there's a few that will still abuse it, but residents seem to, uh, uh, be upset as well as, as far as how it looked, and they seem to be, uh, doing a, a better job at, at keeping it clean.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think that, uh, the attention that this issue got, um, kind of got people thinking and, and appreciating what we were talking about. Um, so hopefully that'll cut, keep up and, uh, you know, it won't get ahead of us like it did, uh, a month or so ago. Also, I hope that, uh, people continue to be, uh, concerned about issues of, of trash and eyesores around town and that that, you know, it, it extends to other areas, not just their particular neighborhoods. And we want to keep ahead of that and hopefully everybody will appreciate the effort that we all make, uh, to keep this town looking good and eating clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I always go last, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to thank John. Uh, we did have a meeting on this. Um, uh, one of these Zoom meetings we had, and, uh, one of the things we came up with was the cameras, was the, uh, the signage. So some of that stuff's gonna be taken into place, but we also did a, um, I happened to do a small video with BCAT. Uh, they, they did post it up on BCAT. Um, and I got a lot of comments from residents saying that was good, that, uh, some people needed to know what was going on. And since that video, I've driven by here, I drive by every day, but I'd say probably three times a week I, I drive into the park along and take a look, and it has been better. So I want to say thanks to the residents for actually listening. Uh, so one of my comments was the fact that, you know, even though there's boxes out there and there's dumpsters, the people that still work in this building that we sit in, that I'm sitting in right now, they have to look at that all day long. So, um, I just want to say thanks to BCAT putting out there and thank you, John, for the time and effort he did put into this. I think that was about it for me. All right? So I'll just thank you guys. Um, Mr. Sagarino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item, um, John, uh, will be updating the board, um, on the snow and ice budget and requesting, uh, approval from the board for some additional funding for this year like we, like we have to do just about every year. So, uh, John?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is another, uh, fun year. I mean, we, we had a free year, uh, last year. Last, last, uh, snow and ice season, uh, by comparison, but this year, uh, uh, we, we are, uh, leading to what's probably more than the average, uh, winter for us. As of the time, uh, when I typed this memo to the town administrator, we had had 12 events. Uh, we're up to, uh, 14 right now with two events last week, uh, including the freezing rain and then, uh, the two or three days of non-stop snow that we had between, uh, Thursday and Saturday. Uh, so we definitely have responded to a lot of events this year. Um, we have had, uh, four events that we need to contract those four major events. Uh, the rest have been handled by either just the highway division or by, uh, recreation and, uh, DPW personnel. They have not been that large, except that they have been long. So with that, we will be exceeding our normal budget of $350,000. So my recommendation is that, uh, the board votes are authorized at expenditures of up to $500,000 in addition to the original 350, for a total of $850,000 for this year. Um, as a way of comparison, um, you know, um, Burlington does average about, uh, 60 inches of snow every year. Uh, and we spend about $700,000 in average. Uh, the median, I should say, is about 710,000. So, so we seem to be in the ballpark this year. We don't know what the weather is gonna bring in March. Um, but I do recommend that, uh, we get that authorization so we will not stop the snow and ice for this year.
Thank you, John. Um, gentlemen, I know we go through this every year, so why don't we start with, uh, Mr. Hogan? Um, uh, any comments, questions?
No, just hopefully that, you know, the, uh, the, the snow that we've had so far this year doesn't put us over our previous couple of years where we had some really big numbers. So I'm happy to stay where we're at.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, John, this week is gonna be a little bit warmer, thankfully, and, uh, we're gonna have some snow melting and some rain. How, um, how do you think we're doing with our catch basins? Are we, are we okay? You think we're gonna have any flooding or we, we looking good on that?
So, uh, obviously we have, there, there's some things that we worry about, uh, during the winter time. Uh, one is the hydrants. And I have to say that the fire department did go out, uh, and, and handle a large number of those. And then, um, they gave us a list of the ones that we needed equipment for, so we actually tended to those as well. Um, some, uh, residents thankfully also took care of their own hydrants and that helps a lot. Uh, and then with the catch basins, what we do is we do not clear all of them. It's impossible for our forces to actually clear every one of them. So, um, I had asked the residents to help us with those as well and the ones that they can. But, but the, uh, areas where we know there's flooding, those we do tend to separately. I mean, we know what flooding tends to happen. So at the very least, those will tend to. Um, last week we were already doing some of those as well. Uh, so hopefully with the rain, uh, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be terribly bad. Um, but again, I do, again, encourage the residents to help with both hydrants and catch basins. Uh, we have thousands of them around town. I mean, it's not even hundreds, it's thousands. So it's, it's literally impossible to tend to all of them with, uh, you know, we have 14, uh, personnel in the highway department. Uh, that, that's all we'll be doing and we'll then finish. So.
Thank you, John. Just, uh, to echo what John said, we're just, um, asking the residents if they can, you know, pitch in a little and make sure that, uh, the, the catch basins get cleaned and are, are clear so the water can flow and no one will experience any backups. But thank you, John. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Rennie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, good job to, uh, DPW crew. Uh, I want to, um, particularly, um, uh, throw in on the sidewalks. Seems like, um, we're doing a pretty good job on the sidewalk. We, it, it was an area we were, uh, we needed some improvement and, and from what I can see, we've, uh, we've made, uh, considerable improvement over, over the past year. So, uh, tip of the cap to, uh, everybody involved. Thank you.
I'll put that alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, John's quick question. I know, you know, as we've been moving forward, we've been having some difficulty finding, you know, contractors for snowplow, you know, uh, clearing the roads, helping us out, and we've been, uh, attempting to offset with, you know, uh, our own staff. Um, in terms of, you know, cost comparison, you know, is there, what's the, what's the difference? Like, are we, are we finding the, the buys to help us? And is there any, you know, cost difference or cost savings using, you know, uh, town employees for overtime versus, you know, contract help?
Uh, so a, a very interesting tidbit on that question. So this year, this winter season, we were able to actually get almost all the contractors that we would have wanted to have. Uh, unlike other communities. And, and I think a lot of it helped, uh, if you remember, I think it was last year that we increased the rates. Um, it didn't have an effect last year, unfortunately, but, uh, it seems to have had an effect the year after. So we actually have a good number of contractors. Uh, in one of the last events, uh, that we had, we had about 50 contracted pieces and 30 of our round. So as you can see, our number keeps on growing on our own forces. Uh, and, and we're getting to a very good number as far as what we do between contractors and our own forces. Um, as far as cost, since we are reducing the cost of the contractors, not by choice, but that's what has happened, and we has increased our own forces, we're still averaging, uh, about, and this is just a, a number that seems to be the same no matter what year it is. We're averaging about $12,000 per inch. So when you do any particular year and you multiply the number of inches we got times $12,000, this is about our budget. Um, there's a lot of things that are changing, and this is why we're able to maintain the number. I feel costs have been going down. They seem to be stabilizing. Our salt has also, the, the cost of salt has been going down over the years. So, uh, so all those things together, yeah, they seem to match up to about $12,000 per inch. Uh, I think that's probably as low as we're gonna see it because all these good things have been happening at the right time. Uh, I can only see salt prices going up. I already heard that there's shortages of salt this year. You know what that means? The salt prices are gonna go up. Uh, fuel has gotten very low, so this only has a place to go, which is higher. Uh, and of course wages and everything else will continue to go up. Uh, but yeah, this, uh, we haven't seen an increase. I guess that's a good thing. Am I right? We, the number seems to be stable. And again, if you hear me saying that the median is 10, uh, 710,000 dollars with 60 inches of snow, you know, 60 times 12, 72, which is about where we are.
12,000 is the magic number. Excellent.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John, thank you. Um, you know, we all, we all go through this every year, and every year we, we seem to add money to it, which is something we've done for the past six years that I've been here and probably just as long as Bob's been here because he's got tenure on us all. Um, but yeah, it's the same thing every year. Um, prices, prices fluctuate left and right, contractors come in and out, but overall the town is in really good shape. We do, uh, we do a bang-up job with these, uh, contractors that come out there, and it's because of the DPW that follows them around and make sure that all the corners are pushed back and sidewalks are done. And, you know, there's some cul-de-sacs out there that don't think they get what they need to get, but one quick phone call and they're down there to fix whatever problem it is. So, John, thank you to you and your crew for taking care of the residents of this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have to approve this. I need a motion from somebody.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the authorization of an additional $500,000 for the snow and ice operations for the remainder of this season.
Motion by Bob, second by Michael. Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti, yes. 500. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Don't go too far. We'll be back.
Right now.
Yep. Sagarino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next ad, agenda item, uh, was requested by John Sanchez to discuss some revisions, uh, to the cemetery rules and regulations. Uh, the plan for tonight is to discuss the changes, uh, with the board, and then we'll bring them back to your next meeting and ask you to vote on them. So, John, do you want to run through those changes for the board, please?
Yes, uh, thank you, Paul. Um, I want to say that, that this is a recommendation of the Cemetery Oversight Committee. Uh, so we have had two meetings with the committee, and the committee is formed, uh, by, uh, two selectmen, uh, Mike Grunion and Joe Morandi, the, the chair, and we also have two other members, Frank Monaco and Bill Byer. And at both, uh, meetings that we had this year so far, uh, we were specifically reviewing the proposed rules and regulations. So what you have in front of you is the recommendation of the committee after, uh, having a lot of conversation on the issues that we had. Uh, so the item in question is, uh, a- a- and again, this is following up on, on what the board has already wanted us to do, is whether or not we should, we should allow plantings, uh, uh, ornaments, um, decorations, and I can go on and on, on, on the gravesites. Uh, so we wanted to modify the rules to, to allow some kind of holiday decorations, um, of a certain size. And if you look at the recommendations, specifically talks about where they have to fit in relation to, uh, the gravesite. Um, it also talks about when those decorations are gonna get removed. Uh, cause, uh, some, some, unfortunately, some people put a decoration, they're way in advance of whatever holiday, call it Christmas. And then, uh, they will leave them there until February. Hopefully, they think that they'll still be there in February. And, uh, you know, our goal is to maintain the cemetery is looking good. And a lot of times, whether it's flowers or plantings or, uh, decorations, they don't look good forever. So we hope that these recommendations will help both our residents know what the rules are, so they know what the constraints that they may have, and also our cemetery crews when they do their work in maintaining the cemeteries. So, um, I hope that you received that red line version of the rules, so you can see what the changes that we want to make are. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have today on that.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Uh, so gentlemen, myself and Mike sat in on this. I'm gonna wait till the end. Uh, I do have some comments I'm gonna make on this, uh, particular item, but Michael, why don't you go first? You sat in with this, uh, on me, with me. So go ahead.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Um, you know, when it, it's kind of a delicate subject. Um, when it comes to cemetery, it's, uh, you have, uh, grieving family members, um, who, who, who visit often and, and like to, uh, add particular items, uh, personal items, uh, uh, sentimental items, um, to the, to the gravesite. Uh, and it's, it's, it's put our, our employees in, in a difficult position in the past, um, when we, when we remove them. Um, you, you can imagine, you know, we, we take quite a bit of pride in, in maintaining our cemetery. You know, all you guys are, are there on Memorial Day and, and you know how, how beautiful the cemetery looks. And, and it, it looks that way because, um, um, of the policies that we've had over the years of, um, you know, not allowing things to get, get out of control. So, um, we're looking for some middle ground here. Um, uh, John and, uh, Frank have agreed to relax some of the rules and, uh, um, offer a little bit more flexibility. And, um, uh, we, we intend to do a little bit better job of, uh, informing of people that visit the cemetery grounds of, of the rules and regulations. We have some, some signage, um, we talked about adding some signage and things like that, so the folks will be clear what the policies are. And, um, hopefully that will, uh, ease some of the, the, uh, issues, um, that we've, we've had over the last few months. So I think that, um, I, I think the policies are reasonable, and I hope you take a moment to, to review them and would ask you to support them, uh, when we meet again, um, on this matter. Thank you.
Bill, so Mike? Thank you, Mr. Rennie. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and I clicked my comments ahead of time. Um, I have seven questions. Um, one of them is strictly technical, uh, so that they, it won't indulge me for a moment. Um, John, um, the, the most technical of all of them in item number 47 in my document, uh, line two of item 47, uh, toward the back half, i- i- I'm gonna pick up in the middle of the sentence. So 12 inches deep by the width of the monument, and then it becomes gobbledygook for me. I just wanted to clarify if my computer just had a bit of a stroke, um, and what that actually says.
So, um, right after that sentence, when it says that 12 inches deep by the width of the monument, so the, the goal was to delete the last sentence in that paragraph. So, so again, I don't know what your document will say, but everything that was written there before we, we're proposals to delete.
Okay, so, so that, that paragraph should end with the width of the monument?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So I've got like some, it's just kind of, you know, uh, it looks like, you know, all scrambled letters and then the town cemetery division, except there was bomb stability, there's just flowers and plants. So all of that is just stricken.
Except for, except for that sentence, you started to read again. So whatever you can read.
Okay. Excellent. All right.
Yeah.
That's, uh, tricky, tricky thing number one. All right. So, um, a couple of things. So in, in item 52, uh, we, we mentioned a reasonable attempt would be allowed. Uh, and I know that's mentioned in a couple of spots. Do we, and I, I briefly browsed today a- at work, um, the, uh, the full, uh, policy, do we ever define reasonable attempt?
So we, we talked a lot at the meeting about that. Okay, so, um, so one, one of the items that was suggested, and I think that's the one we're gonna go by, uh, because y- you have no idea who were on or who was maintaining the gravesite. Okay? So we thought about was, uh, to utilize something similar to what landscapers use, like a landscaper flag that we will place at the gravesite, saying that we're gonna be removing certain items. Um, I don't know if you've seen those, the landscapers use it to mark when they're doing some work. Uh, because we don't know who is coming in. We don't know who the granddaughter, grandson, whoever's happened to be there doing that. So by doing that several weeks in advance of our cleanup, that will be how we'll provide notice to those. Uh, so, uh, people tell us all the time, we're there weekly. Well, so if we leave you for several weeks, they'll be able to see it. Um, other than that, it's, it's extremely hard because we actually do not know. Typically, the people who own the gravesites, the ones that we have on the deed, uh, they already passed. Uh, so, so, uh, so that's what we talked in the meeting about doing.
So in terms of, of any kind of phone call contact system, we have no, you know, like contact registry for, at least, I mean, you know, the last, like, let's say, five years worth of folks who, or, you know, like there's, there's no, you know, I guess, I mean, I, I imagine that there wouldn't be, but, you know, some kind of consistent record of, of, you know, who to contact?
Uh, we, we are on the deed. You, we do not have that. Oh, correct. As, as Bob says, just the name of the deed. That's what we have.
Okay. I see Mike's hand.
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to point out that we, we do advertise in, in the local newspapers a- ahead of time that, uh, we, we might, we, we publish an announcement that at such and such a date, uh, that the cemetery division will be removing holiday flowers, uh, things like that. We also usually here in, in an effort to, uh, get the word out.
Yeah, no, I know. I just, you know, I, I think about, you know, like very specific cases as of, as of recent anyways, and and try to think to myself, you know, is there any other way, you know, if someone's not on social media, if they're away on vacation for some reason, or someone else in the, in the family and they're caring for, there's so many circumstances, I think, and, and specifically around the, around 52, whether it was the previous approval, you know, as opposed to it being like so holiday generic, but, you know, um, somebody was already given, maybe 20 years ago was given authorization for a rose bush or whatever. Um, you know, I mean, because it's so specific, I was, I was hoping that maybe we had some way to reach out to that family specifically, um, you know, for contact. So just as, as consideration, um, you know, maybe we can, we can define reasonable attempt that way. It's just clearly stated in the policy. Uh, you know, whichever way, you know, you, you feel appropriate.
So I, I have, I have to add, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I have to add that, um, uh, following, uh, up some of the issues that we might have had over the last year, we had looked at the records that we have to see how many authorizations we've given in the past. And I, I can tell you that I've been in the town for close to 15 years. We have not given one authorization to plant any trees, and you can see how many have been planted over the last 15 years. This is very easy to tell when they're, you know, fresh bushes that were planted last year or the year before. So, uh, I don't know if there are any that we are actually authorized and writing as the policy calls for, uh, since we have not been able to find any records.
Okay. All right. Um, let me see. Uh, oh, in, uh, in item 49, um, and this, this might just be, they're all very technical, I apologize. Um, item 49, we refer to folks who have flat mark, markers, have one week for allowable items versus, and I could be misreading this, two weeks for other lots and graves and monuments. Is, and was I reading that right or am I just misconstruing something?
Yes, uh, and that, and that's particular for a different reason. First, item 49, we're not recommending any changes to it. They're staying as, as is. Um, and, and the reason for that is because the, uh, flat market section is a totally different, uh, section that, when you think about how we work around it, uh, you don't have the space that you have compared to a, a regular gravesite. It's, is, is, the regular gravesite is much larger space than the tight waters of, of that. So you're correct.
Okay. Um, but then again, I apologize because, because some of these are, you know, I'll, I'll skip a couple of these because they're not pertinent to changes. Um, and I can ask you offline about them. Um, do we, do we call out, the only other thing that, that would affect the changes was, do we, do we ever define uh, what a lot is and does, do the memorial walls fall? And does, do the memorial walls fall into that? You know, now that we have those, you know, and they're newer per se?
So the columbarium section, it is a separate section of the rules and regulations that talks about that. So that's totally outside of this one. This is just for lots of, you know, like either double deaves, flat markers, or the regular gravesites. So there's a section that talks about what they can do or they can't for the columbarium.
Okay, all I saw was the, looks like page six, Pine Haven Cemetery columbarium, paragraph thirty-eight. It was just a very, like it just defines what it is. It didn't have any specific regulations around it, that's all.
Well, we could talk offline since we're not changing on that one, but there are certain things because it does talks. I don't have it in front of me right now. I can look it up. They only talk specifically about not being able to put any type of vessels, plantings and things, and that all of the flowers will be removed the next day. Because of, you know, again, you're sharing a space with a lot of other people.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I just quickly scanned today, so I probably just pop right over it. I'll connect with you after on a couple of other questions I have.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick things. John, do the people who purchase a plot, do they get printed material, a pamphlet or a flyer or anything that gives them these regulations or heads up?
The answer is yes. And unfortunately, I have to say that it normally happens through the funeral home. Because we typically deal with the funeral director. But that's one of the part, when they get the deed, because that comes from us, from the town. When we send the deed out, the deed goes out with the rules and regs.
Okay. Also, again, this is one of those quirky things that I just picked up on. In the past, we used to date when these rules and regs were updated. Would you be doing that on this too at some point, when it's voted and approved? So that everybody knows when the last time it's been updated?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. That's, yes is a good answer.
Yep.
And one other quick, one word answers are unique, but that's a good one. There's a, I didn't write down the number on which paragraph it was in, but it talked about selling a plot back to the town. And it said the present of value. Did it one time say that it was always the original price? Or did I misread that?
Yes, and again, we're not changing that as part of this proposed edit. But in an effort to get, as you know, we're, we need graves. I mean, the cemetery is on outer space. So a few years ago, it may go back about ten years now, because I know it goes back a while. As an effort to try to get some residents to sell us back some of the graves they had bought. Because some, either they don't have the need anymore, they might have bought four because they thought that they're going to have their kids with them and all of a sudden the kids move to Florida someplace else. So we passed that change through the board to incentivize people to sell us back the graves. And it has worked to a point. You know, we've been able to get some of these ones back. And don't forget, we sell them at that price. So to us, it's a zero gain. Obviously, it can be seen as an investment for whoever bought them cheaper than what today's price is. But we've been able to get a few back from residents that way.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we're going to approve this at a future meeting, so I want to take my time and go through each of these. And the reason I bring that up, what we have here in writing and the changes, just to give you an example, as Mr. Priest mentioned, number forty-seven, it says planting in the cemetery lots and graves is limited to annual plants and flowers placed in an area in front of a monument that is not more than twelve inches deep by the width of the monument. It discusses the dimensions of the decoration or the planting, but there's, from what I can see, doesn't show how far away from the headstone or the marker they can be. So may, you know, someone can misconstrue because the term vague in front of could be vague and someone may want to locate it not directly in front of the headstone to not block a name or a date. And they may, you know, move, put it away from the headstone. So do we have anything in place that limits the distance from the headstone that an item can go?
So the intent of that paragraph is, and again, we're not changing that one now. Perhaps we change it. The intent is that that twelve inches is in front of the monument. Twelve inches in front of it by the width of the monument. And again, it's not, you're correct. Not specifically it says that, but that's the intent. But it's maybe instead of saying in an area in front of the monument, it should be attached to the monument. I don't know if I explained it.
The way it reads is plantings in front of a monument, not more than twelve inches deep by the width of the monument. But there's nothing that says how far away it can be from the monument. So if someone wanted to put it at, say, in the middle of the grave or even further, there's a potential they could hit a sprinkle line or something like that. So I just want to see if there's any way we can keep it with a certain distance of the monument, from the monument. So that's my, I want to go through this completely. And I know there's no answer for it tonight. So that's why, what I'll do is I'm just going to defer all my questions until I get to go through each and every one of these, you know, and pick out certain questions that I have.
So if I may, and again, we can talk about it the next meeting, perhaps I'm writing to say that it has to be within twelve inches of the monument to the width of the monument, you know, something like that. So we can perhaps tweak that if that's what the selectmen desire to do at the next meeting.
Well, I just don't want people saying, well, it's in front of the monument. It's six feet away from the monument, in front of the monument. So I just don't want to, you know, leave that little vagueness where someone can get their own definition from it. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, thank you very much. This was enlightening. A lot of good questions came up about this. I know it's just for discussion, but I would like to thank the cemetery subcommittee for the meeting we had. There was a lot of insight on that. And Mr. Runyon was right in the beginning when he talked about how it's not an easy chapter for us because people are going there for a reason. Their loved one has passed and it's a very emotional aspect. But sometimes when you sit there and you talk to people that have worked there all day long, it's a whole different ballgame of what goes on inside. So just real quick, for instance, you're driving down, your loved one is five rows back. The other loved one has still with us, they're sitting in a car. Because of these shrubs and stuff, they can't see, they can't see their gravesite because something's in the way. A bush has grown up the last five years. It's way too big now. A lot of things came into play and trust me, we thought a lot about everybody's moment when they're there to recognize their loved one. It wasn't an easy conversation to have about a lot of things. And I just want to thank Mr. Sanchez for enlightening us. And it just wasn't easy, that's all. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sagorino right now. Paul, any comments on this?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Just, you could just give us an idea how much time the board needs to sort of review things. And we'd like to bring it back for a vote as early as the next selectmen's meeting in a couple of weeks. But if the board feels it needs more time, by all means, let us know. And we can push that off as well.
Thank you. I got a thumbs up from Jimmy. Nick, do you think the next meeting would be all set? Gentlemen, get in touch, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Runyon, you're all set. All right. Get in touch with Mr. Sanchez. Hold on, Bob. Get in touch with Mr. Sanchez for any other questions. And John, could you please forward me those questions? Like, I know what's going on before the meeting comes up and that way they're all known. Or you guys can CC me on the meeting. Or on the questions you are sending to John, that would be great. Mr. Hogan, yes?
Well, two things, but yes, I was going to address that. For those people who had questions that they didn't ask tonight, if there was some way we could get them so we at least have access to the information that other people are questioning. It's just a comment. As in the case of so many things, when we vote on this, considering how passionate people are, and as the veterans agent, I got a lot of calls too, just like John Sanchez does. We need to make sure that we stand fast. And if we're going to say yes, this is the policy, we need to live with that policy as does everybody. As difficult the time as it is, people have to understand that there are thousands of other families up there who may not like to have whatever it is that's going on with that particular family. So we need to work with everybody, but we need to stand strong. If this is the policy, this is the policy.
You, Bob, you couldn't, Mr. Hogan, you couldn't be any more right because the bottom line is going to come back to us, right, Mr. Sanchez? It's going to come back to us as the board. So whatever the policy is, we decide this is the way it's going to be. It's going to be tough, but we're going to get a little flak every now and then. But that's what we're here for. That's why we get the big bucks.
So, Mr. Chairman, before you move to the next item, depending on the number of questions that we have and comments, perhaps it would be good to get the advisory committee back for a meeting prior to the selectmen's meeting. I mean, because we do have friend Monica, Bill Byer, who contributed greatly to this change as well.
Absolutely, they did a great job, yes.
So as the questions come in, maybe perhaps I'll, you know, make a decision with the two selectmen to see if we should have another meeting prior to the selectmen voting on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thought about some of the things that might happen, you know. And this is not unique, there may be other things that some of the board members would like to change or edit. So, I mean, this is the opportunity, am I right? So we can talk prior to scheduling the vote.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have an update from the Town of Burlington Scholarship Fund Committee. I'm not sure if there's anybody from the committee in the audience that wants to speak. If not, I'd be more than happy to provide an update to the board. But let's just see if there's anybody here that wanted to speak on that.
Is there anybody out there who would like to speak on this?
Okay, it does look like there is, Mr. Chairman. But we did receive an email from Gina Larry from that committee. They've been doing great work since they took over the tax write-off, check-off box town scholarship fund. They wanted to inform the board that this year, they believe that they can give out three twenty-five hundred dollar scholarships. Those are open to any student from Burlington. Doesn't have to be at the Burlington schools. It could be a Burlington student attending school elsewhere. The deadline for that is April first, 2021 for the applications. They're available at Burlington High School Guidance Office, but it is open to students, Burlington students from any, any school. And once that committee makes their awards and whatnot, we'll have them back here and invite them in to have a discussion with the board on their process. Betty's preparing a press release to go out there to the community to advertise the availability of these scholarships. And that's essentially what the update was for this evening.
May I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, Betty.
The Town of Burlington Scholarship Fund is also reminding residents that they can help our high school graduates by donating to this funds and they can mail checks to Twenty-Nine Center Street to the Attorney of the Treasurer Collector payable to T O B S F. They encourage all the applicants, of course, like Paul said, to get the applicants' applications in before April. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Great. Any comments, gentlemen? Raise your hands if anybody has any. Nick, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I want to thank the committee, obviously, for, you know, their hard work and dedication for this. I think it's great. I know twenty-five hundred dollars might not seem like a ton of money, but, you know, the fact that we can help, you know, potentially three students out, you know, as they consider, you know, that next step of higher education, whatever it might be, is fantastic. And I think that, you know, in a very difficult year, I want to thank the people who donated, the people who are giving to our students, who are still, you know, taking a few bucks and, you know, putting it towards, you know, the future of, you know, our youth. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Bob?
No, I'm good.
Mike? You shaking your head, no? Mr. Tigges? All right, no comment from myself. Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of appointments coming up. The first up is we have an appointment for the Historical Commission. The request is to move an alternate member into a vacant full member position. We do have a candidate for that. And with that, I wish to appoint Robert Fahey to a full member position on the Historical Commission and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved. So moved and seconded by Mr. Priest. Okay, gentlemen, we need a roll call vote on this. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next is an appointment to the Board of Registars, which is a Board of Selectment appointment. We have our town clerk, Amy Warfield, here, I believe, for this agenda item. Amy, do you want to fill the board in on what we're doing with this appointment?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Paul. Yes, what it is, is the members of the Board of Registars are nominated voted on by you all, either the Democratic or the Republican committees. And Lisa Jimenez, it's been recommended by the Democratic Town Committee.
Excuse me, Amy? I'm going to stop you for one second. I can barely hear you.
Yeah, me too.
Is that a little better?
A little bit, not quite, but if you see, if you see this, you understand what's going on.
No problem at all. I'm sorry, I'm on a different device. The speaker is not as good as my normal device. So the Board of Registars, the process is, is that the, either the Republican or the Democratic Town Committee, depending on whose seat it is, nominates to you all a member that they would like to have fill that empty seat. And so tonight I have Lisa Jimenez, who is a member of the Democratic Town Committee, to fill the seat that he's making now on that board.
Great, thank you. Paul, any comments on this?
I know, sir, Mr. Chairman, like you say, we got a recommendation from the, this one from the Democratic Town Committee as to the person they would like to appoint. I believe Ms. Jimenez is in the meeting with us. I'm not sure if you want to hear from her. But other than that, it's strictly just a board appointment to the Board of Registars.
Well, if she's at the meeting, I would love to hear from her. Just to say hi. Are you here?
She could be muted.
She's trying to talk, I can see her camera on, but we can't.
We can see her, but we can't hear her, so.
The bane of technology.
Yes, it is.
Don't apologize. No, I was just reading your lips, sorry.
All right, tell her, tell her, tell her we'll do this all good.
Yes, I'm impressed. I'm glad to have a new member on the board. And she and I have talked several times and she seems very interested in what the Board of Registars does and looking forward to serving with us.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Lisa Jimenez for to fill that position on the Democrat Town Committee.
Second.
Second.
Board of Registars. Board of Registars.
Motion to second it. Okay, gentlemen, a roll call vote, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Five zero zero, congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
There it is.
All good. Okay, then we have a hearing. Well, it's a public hearing. Who has, Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have a hearing. It is not a public hearing. It's about a name change to one of our liquor establishments. And I believe we have attorney Mark Vaughn here representing Island Creek Oyster Bar. Mark?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Sagorino, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Sagarino, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to be before you tonight in connection with this record, Mark Vaughn with Reiman Bronstein, representing the applicant. With me tonight are Shore Gregory and Laura Staley, who are, Shore is part of the ownership group of Island Creek and Row 34 and Laura Staley is listed as the general manager for this location. So we're here in connection with the existing Island Creek Oyster Bar location that is within the district. I know, hopefully, you're familiar with the location and know where we're talking about, but it's at, on District DAV, they've been there since 2017 and have had a good run. I think, no surprise to any of you that are on the Board of Selectmen, obviously, this has been an enormously challenging year for the restaurant industry. And to that end, I think that Shore Gregory and his folks have determined that a change of operator here would best position this location for future success. So he and his group run Row 34, which is a seafood restaurant concept with locations in Boston and Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And for a variety of different reasons, they feel like refreshing this concept with the Row 34 brand will be a very positive step for future success here. Island Creek has actually closed its other location in Boston. So this would be the only location left if they were to remain. And I think the feeling that they all have and can speak to it tonight as needed is that just be difficult to just have one restaurant and not be able to have the synergies associated with the Row 34 concept. So same quality of food, same seafood focus, not proposing any modifications to the layout of the restaurant, same seat count and all of that. But it really would be refreshing it with some interior upgrades a bit, but otherwise it would be really just putting the new concept into play here. So Laura Staley, who is listed as the general manager, a long and distinguished career in the restaurant industry. She's been with Island Creek, the Row 34 family since 2017, wine director. And very excited about taking on the role of manager for Row 34 to provide for a successful enterprise here. So with that, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions, address any comments you have, but both Shore Gregory and Laura here for anything that you feel I haven't adequately covered. But basically, as Mr. Sagarino indicated, under the ABCC requirements for a change of DBA, you are required to go through a process with the local liquor license authority, that being you, as well as the ABCC. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Hogan, seeing that him and I are on the liquor commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Vaughn. Did I, just clarify, Laura Staley is the new manager of Row 34 that we're voting on tonight, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Could either Laura or Shore, if they're there, give us a very brief, you say it's the same menu, but there must be something different that would make people want to go to Row 34 versus the Oyster House. Are either of them there that give us just a very brief synopsis?
Shore Gregory, thank you guys for having us tonight. Yeah, I think it's a little bit, the price point is a little more friendly than Island Creek, so it's a few dollars lower, it's meant to be a little bit more approachable and a little bit more family-friendly. So I think that those are the sort of two most distinguishing characteristics, but obviously, our passion is oysters and sort of the freshest seafood. And so we're gonna stay in that lane with an attempt to continue to make the restaurant more approachable.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I assume the word "more approachable" means I can probably go there more often now. A quick question, really not to do with the liquor license, but because of the current situation, any plans for outdoor seating for additional capacity?
Are you speaking on a permanent basis or on a temporary basis that is good?
Temporary, when the weather permits.
Yeah, we were really grateful for the support both of the community and from National Development to run and expanded outdoor seating operation last summer. And so long as it is permitted, we would hope to take advantage of it again this year.
All right, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the town administrator one quick question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sagarino, would approval be needed by us for something like that? Or does it go through the building inspector's review process?
At this point, Selectment Tigges, what we're asking businesses to do is just to send us a letter with their intention that they want to continue to do things the same way they did last year. That will go to the reopening task force, which is Melissa, Kristen from planning, building department, fire, police, just to sort of run through the process. But we anticipate, if it's something that we've approved in the previous year, that most likely we'll be approving it again for the upcoming year as well. So a simple letter to Economic Development Director Melissa Tentaklas will get the ball rolling for the upcoming season.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, I apologize for going off topic, but I just had that thought and I wanted to get those questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, now the paperwork looks fine to me, very thorough. I am curious, however, Mr. Gregory, the name Row 34, is there a little history with that? A significance to the name?
More is, Mr. Runyon, yeah. So it is a location on the oyster farm in Duxbury where we procure a lot of our oysters. And so we experimented with a new type of oyster, this was years ago. And it just so happened to fall in the 34th row. And honestly, endlessly creative people that we are settled on that name pretty quickly.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Okay, I have one quick question. When will we be changing this over? Mr. Gregory, when do you expect it to change over?
Yeah, pending all of our approvals, we hope to have it done and in place around May 1st.
Fantastic, great. So we can let the residents know it'll be around May 1st that it will probably take place and hopefully we'll all get out there for a nice seafood dinner, which I love.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to vote on this, I need an approval. Mr. Sagarino, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just defer to Betty. Betty, would you prefer this in two separate votes for the two different items? Name change and manager change? Or is it okay for the board to do one vote for both items?
Thank you for asking, Paul. You may do both approvals in one vote as long as nobody has an issue or a question regarding two votes being on one vote.
Gentlemen, we also.
That even makes sense.
Yeah, it made sense, give me a thumbs up if you want a one vote. Everyone gave a thumbs up there, okay. So I'll need a motion and then a second for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion we approve Island Creek Oyster's bar name changed to Row 34 and changing the manager to Laura Staley.
Second. Motion made second by Bob. Roll call vote, gentlemen, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero zero, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Betty.
Mr. Vaughn, great job.
Thank you all, appreciate your time and look forward to trying to, I'm a tenant, as you know, in the district, so a big fan of the seafood restaurant as well, so looking forward to it. But thanks.
Can't wait. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might very quickly?
Yes, sir.
This question is to Betty, so, you know, Laura Shaw and Shore and Mark can take off if they want. I always ask the question and I forgot to ask it when it might turn. And the answer is always the same, but I ask it anyway. Betty, you're getting all the, or Lynn, right now, who's taking over a lot of this. You're getting all of the paperwork for the change?
Thank you, thank you for asking, Selectman Hogan, yes. Whenever the application is submitted for a change of manager, we request a number of items from the manager, including whether they're tip certified, a past resume, and if they have read the rules and regulations. The application also was very thorough, we went through it here at the office and there was no issues with them. Thank you.
All right, thank you both, you're welcome. Um, Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is a public hearing. So we're gonna need to read the notices on record, open the public hearing. And then what we will request for the board, based on a recommendation of Town Council, is to continue the hearing to March 8th at 6:30.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, can we just have Selectment Tigges read that advertisement in, please? And then you guys can vote to?
Absolutely.
Open up? All set?
Good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Burlington Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 22nd, 2021, at or after 6:30 PM to consider the petition from Brown Rudnick for one application of new singular wireless PCS LLC doing business as AT&amp;T for a small cell wireless installation in the public right-of-way replacement light pole near 44 Burlington Mall Road, Burlington, Mass. 01803. The plans and supporting documentation are available for public inspection by contacting bmcdonough@berlinson.org. The plans will also be available on the town's website, berlinson.org, small cell information. And the Burlington Board of Selectmen hearing notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times and may also be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org.
Thank you, Jimmy. Mr. Tigges, excuse me. Mr. Sagarino, back to you.
Mr. Chairman, can we just get a vote to open the public hearing? And then shortly thereafter, a vote to continue to March 8th at 6:30. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, open the public hearings.
I'll second that.
Second. Mike, take your pick. Mr. Priest, roll call vote, gentlemen, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Okay. So the public is open to the public.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we continue this public hearing till March 8th or after 6:30 PM.
Okay, that's what it says. There's a motion, I have a second. Mr. Hogan, thank you, roll call vote, gentlemen, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. So five zero zero to move this to March 8th. Hey, gentlemen, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've become a fan of audiobooks as of late and Mr. Tigges is going to go ahead and put this all on audio. So anybody who wants to can do that with this monstrosity of a report.
Then we'll call Bonds and Nobles and see if we can get it together. Nice work, Jimmy, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sagarino, back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item was scheduled to be a public hearing, but it was later determined that the purpose of the public hearing is not required. All the property is already owned by the town, so we don't actually need an easement on that property. This is the utilities that are gonna service the DPW rec facility on Great Meadow. So this item's been canceled for that reason.
Thank you. Okay. So we can just move along for a discussion. Uh, Mr. Sagarino, I'm gonna defer.
Did Mr. Denozio take care of this? Mr. Denozio take care of this, did he start this?
That's where I was gonna get to, I'm just. John, are you still there, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't sure if you were ready.
I was ready.
First, I just want to give a little background on this item. Back in early December, Chairman Morandi asked about the process of performing a performance evaluation on the town administrator and specifically he asked that we work with the town council to outline the process, how it all works. Soon after that, we had a conference with Town Council Lisa Mead and one of the subject matter experts at their firm. They were able to explain to us the changes in the executive evaluation process and gave us a roadmap to follow. And they also shared a draft of an evaluation tool for the board to use. This tool rates the town administrator's performance in 10 categories with between four and six measurement criteria in each category. The main categories were personal characteristics, professionalism, public relations and communications, board support, community leadership, organizational leadership, personnel management, financial management, town operations and infrastructure, and planning and organization. Written system included scores, scoring for each of those criteria from one to four, with one being unsatisfactory and four being the best of exceed standards. There was an opportunity to comment in each category and also the overall assessment for, to be able to comment on strengths and areas to work on. The tool was shared with each of the board members for them to use to evaluate the town administrator's performance. In January, the individual reports were collected and a summary document was created. The chair and vice chair received the summary document, reviewed the summary document with the town administrator. And that's what brings us to tonight.
Thank you, John, appreciate that. So myself and Jimmy sat there and talked it over with, talked a lot of things with Paul. So first of all, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Jim. I'll let you go first, sir, and Mr. Tigges, applause yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Denizio pretty much summed up everything I was gonna say. I was gonna list the categories, but I'll go through them again real quick. So first of all, I want to thank John and Town Council Lisa Mead for this assistance on this. They made it easy for us to do our job, they made it easier. Mr. Sagarino was rated in 10 specific areas. Those areas being personal characteristics, professionalism, community leadership, board support relations, public relations, communications, organizational leadership, personnel management, financial management, town operations and infrastructure, and planning and organization. Some members of this board were to rate, as Mr. Denizio said, on a scale from zero to four. And also each of those 10 sections had a free-form text where you could add additional comments regarding that specific area of responsibility. And the assessment also included an overall assessment at the end. So in addition to the 10 categories, we had the overall assessment, which again was free-form text, that we could utilize any positives or negatives that we needed to discuss. What I did want to say, and I'll defer to the chairman on the outcome of the evaluation, but it should be known that it was extremely consistent. All five members of this board were very, very consistent with their ratings, with their comments. And I'll turn over the rest of it to you, Mr. Chairman, but I just want to thank the rest of the members of the board for doing their job as well. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you very much. Just about everything was said for this. There's something I wanted to do prior to anything going on. Mr. Sagarino needs to have this review done. It's in the middle of his career. I cannot say how truly appreciate him that we all turned reports back in. Mr. Denizio said unsatisfactory was one and exceeds job standards was number four. There's not one in here, I'm looking at the report again today, right in front of me right now, there's not one in here that goes under 3.2 as an average. So that's gonna tell you something, the comments, like Jimmy had said earlier, were all positives. We had a meeting this morning. It was well-taken by Mr. Sagarino. There's some things we're gonna talk about later on, we're gonna work on for both us and Mr. Sagarino. At this point, John, we're going to move forward with this and come up with a timeframe and bring it to the next level. Does that sound reasonable? I'll ask questions in a second, right up right here for Mr. Denizio.
Yes, we're gonna open it up for the rest of the board.
Yes, uh, are you gonna open it up for the, uh, rest of the board to?
Yes, yeah. I'm gonna open it up to the board at this point right now, so we'll start with, uh, Mr. Hogan. You're on mute, Bob.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, referring to your comment about my seniority on the board, uh, Paul is my third town administrator. Um, Bob Mercier, John Petron, and, uh, Paul, uh, I've had the opportunity to work with. And, uh, the one consistent thing that, uh, that exists between all three of them is, um, they've all worked well with the respective boards that existed at that time. And, um, they're all different in their style, but they all accomplished the same goal, and that was to help the board, uh, make this town better at all times. And, uh, Bob, John, and now Paul are doing that. Um, Paul was the most obvious choice at the time, uh, and I'm glad we, we agreed that, uh, you know, going outside wouldn't have found us anyone better because, uh, it, it, there really isn't any. Uh, and then with the hiring of John Dinozio and then Gary G. Nino for the three top positions in the finance team, I think we're in solid shape for the next several years, uh, moving forward as to the guidance that the board will receive. Uh, and, Mr. Chairman, to your point, yes, uh, the lowest, uh, grade through this whole process was one, three point two. The rest were all in the three point six, three point eight, and four. And I think the average, if you averaged everything out, would have been three point eight or three point nine. So, uh, it was a pretty good report, and I'm, I'm happy that, you know, the five of us saw this kinda consistently the same. So, uh, I'm happy with our choice when we hired Paul, and I'm happy with what's going on since. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's always uncomfortable for me, and I'm sure it's very uncomfortable for Paul to, to receive a performance evaluation in a public forum. Um, but unfortunately, that's, that's the law. Um, I, I will say this, that, um, you know, Paul came to us with, um, with, uh, 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 only a little bit of experience in, in, um, uh, management, um, municipal management. But he has certainly met or exceeded my expectations, uh, over the last two years. I'm, 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 I have a very good working relationship with Paul, and I'm, and I'm, I gotta tell you, I am just so proud of Paul and the rest of our team, uh, how they've, um, been handling this COVID-nineteen crisis for the community. Uh, we all owe this, uh, uh, this, this team of, of, uh, professionals, uh, debt of gratitude, in my opinion. But, uh, again, congratulations, Paul, on the high marks that you've, uh, you've, uh, gotten from the board. You deserve them, and, um, I look, I look forward to working with you for many years in the future.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, unlike Mr. Hogan, Paul, you're my first town administrator. Um, and, you know, I, I followed, you know, um, the, your, your, um, uh, appointment, you know, to town, town administrator, you know, when that happened before, you know, my tenure to the board. Um, you know, and it was a very wise choice by the board at that time. Um, in hindsight, uh, you know, with your, you know, accounting background, um, you know, your level-headed approach, um, and, you know, big picture, your ability to see the big picture and focus down on the details, I think are some of the characteristics that have really benefited the town. Um, not just in the pandemic, which of course has been absolutely, you know, amazing, but prior to the pandemic as well. Um, you know, we've been, we've been very fortunate to have you thus far. Um, we appreciate all the effort that you put in. Um, you know, you have a certain way about you that, um, allows people, you're very approachable. And in that, I believe that people confide in you, um, and are more willing to work with you and extend their hand across whatever aisle, uh, needs to be bridged, which, you know, when it comes to, uh, relationship building and not just punching the ticket or seeing how high up on that, you know, four scale you can get, um, makes a, makes an exceptional difference, in my opinion. Um, in terms of areas for approval, I just wanna say publicly, you know, we're all not here just to, you know, pat Paul on the back and say, well done. There are some areas that, that, you know, uh, clearly came, came to the forefront here where, you know, over, over the next couple of years, I think that we definitely wanna put focus on. Um, and it's not to say that these things aren't already in your purview or in your, uh, in your sights. Uh, I think that obviously the pandemic has, uh, taken the utmost focus, and, uh, in your management of that, I'm very appreciative. So, um, very well done, uh, the town of Burlington is lucky to have you and the team that supports you. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, Mr. Tigges.
Uh, just to follow what I said earlier, um, Paul has excelled in his job during a pand- pandemic. Um, I can just imagine if we didn't have this pandemic, where, you know, where these would have been. John, you might, John, we might have needed a, a number five or something for him, but, um, again, Paul, you've done all this in a pandemic, and I just wanna thank you as a resident, as a selectman, and I just wanna thank you for all you've done for this town, um, for us, and, um, it can only, I, I, I think, you know, once we're on the other side of this, it can only get better, and, um, just thank you, Paul.
Okay, gentlemen, everybody spoke. Paul, we know how much you love listening to this. We know how much you enjoy getting the pat on the back, but let me tell you something. I, as an individual resident, not as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I realize every day what you do for this town, and it's incredible. Um, you've gone through this pandemic, which we've all said, we've all said that one word, pandemic. It's before that. I've known you for the last six years, and for the last six years, you have done above and beyond what we expect of our people. The group you put together, Paul Sagorino, John Dinozio, Gary G. Anino, there's something about that group that just, that just blends together and does very well. So, let me just say this, thank you as chairman of the Board of Selectmen and as a resident, for what you've done for this town. If people knew everything, it would be incredible. I'm gonna leave it at that, Paul. Thank you. Mr. Dinozio, back to you. You don't know what to say now, do you, John?
John, you're doing a pretty good job, too.
Yeah, I just assumed I was next.
You will be.
Uh, I, I think the, um, you know, that's the evaluation process in a nutshell, and, um, you know, what you do with it from here is the, um, uh, whatever the intention of the board is, is, uh, up to the board, obviously, so.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move this forward and, uh, John, I'll talk to you about the next step after this, and Mr. Tigges will be there, and we'll go from that point on. Okay? Great, great, thank you. Now, Mr. Sagorino, any comments? Wanna wipe the sweat off your brow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I wanna thank all the board members, uh, for taking the time, uh, to do the evaluation. Um, I know it's, uh, you know, it's time-consuming and it's painful, but I have to tell you, it's very, very important to get feedback, uh, sort of on where, where we are. And, um, I'm very grateful that you took the time. I'm also very grateful for all the, uh, very thoughtful, um, comments and criticisms and, uh, evaluation part of it. Um, I know that I have a long way to go, and I, I have a lot to learn, and I know that, um, I will continuously, uh, strive to get better every single year. Uh, this past year has been a whirlwind with the pandemic. I think, uh, set us back, uh, quite a bit, um, as a, as a team and a board, uh, just based upon how difficult it is to get anything done in this environment. Uh, but again, I'm just very grateful for the board's support. I wanna thank all, um, of, of the town employees, um, 'cause quite frankly, you all know that I can't do what I do without having a great set of town employees on just about every department. Uh, they've been amazing, uh, the work that they do, they, they deserve a great debt of gratitude. And again, I just, um, I will promise to the board, I will continue to work hard and I'll continue to get better. And, uh, believe me, I know that there's a lot to learn left on this job for me, it's just tons, and, uh, you all know how much I love the town, and I wanna make, uh, make the town as great a place as it can be. And, uh, again, thank you very much for the evaluation, and thank you for taking the time and putting all that effort into it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul. So, at this point, we're gonna go to subcommittees. Uh, and we'll start with, uh, Mr. Priest.
Uh, nothing to report right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan. You're on mute.
Thank you, I'm back. Uh, in respect to the memory of more than the five hundred thousand Americans lost during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and in accordance with the presidential proclamation, Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker has ordered the United States of America flag and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag shall be flown at half-staff on all state buildings beginning immediately until sunset on Friday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Um, and as always, uh, for those of us who do, or those of you who do, uh, a prayer for the souls of the families of all those that have been lost and, and injured from the illness, um, keep them in our prayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the only thing I wanna mention during some committees is, uh, I just wanna acknowledge the Board of Health again. They are, um, they're our go-to people right now, and when the vaccines are finally given back to the towns, hopefully, uh, they'll be, you know, they're, they're shielding phone calls every day. They're fighting for, to get vaccines to the residents of Burlington, um, and they're still doing a yeoman's job of that. So, I just wanna thank the Board of Health for all they've done, all they're doing, and all they're gonna be doing in the future. But other than that, uh, nothing else to report.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon.
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay, so subcommittee reports, uh, finished. I have nothing. Uh, chairman's report, I have a few things. Um, I, I got, I received an email this week from Mr. Priest. Uh, Nick, I'm sorry I haven't gotten back to you yet on that, but I do like your idea. I think your idea is very, very, uh, up and coming. Uh, I wrote down some notes as we were talking today. Um, cemetery, a great place for that to, to start out. Uh, the dumpsters, another great place for that to start out. Um, there was something else that happened in town, I forget what it was right now, but that's another, uh, great thing. I talked a little bit about Mr. Sagorino about this. I think that, uh, with three of us or one, one other selectman or get together, I think there's a lot that can be had with this, uh, communications that we I'm not saying that we don't have, 'cause we do have a lot, but this is your profession, this is what you do. Uh, and I think that by doing that, the town will be a better place, whether we need a Twitter account, a Facebook page run separately, when each individual, um, um, department can get on there, and we tell actual facts. The problem I have is that we need the people that are gonna do this, that are gonna run this, to have the actual facts of exactly what goes on. But sometimes you go into the Burlington networks, not gonna say which ones, and all of a sudden, Martha's saying one thing, and Tom's saying something else, and then there's another third story in there, and I read them, and I go, none of that's even close to the truth. And I won't get on them because I won't get into a can't-have-beat-back-and-forth with them about anything. Uh, not that I will have any problem telling anybody the truth. Um, so I think this will be a great thing for us, so I really wanna say thank you for that. All right? Um, and as far as everything else goes, that's all I really had for my chairman's report tonight, so we'll go from there. Uh, town administrator's report, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of items. Uh, the first off is, I just wanna let the board know that, um, the communities in this, um, public health region uh, have begun discussions about whether or not, uh, we have the capabilities of doing a regional, uh, vaccination center. Um, for the, the Board of Health folks from the same communities are having a conversation as well, and, and now the managers are, just to see if, if there's any way that we could possibly pull it off. Uh, some of the, uh, difficulties are that even if we do a regional, um, vaccination clinic, it's still open to everybody in the state. Um, so it becomes a question of, should we be using the town of Burlington's, uh, resources to vaccinate people from, you know, other parts of the state? And, uh, some of the other, um, issues surrounding it is it would be located, I believe in, they want it to be in the same place, and they want it to be continuous, uh, for a long period of time, uh, with the, the ability to do, I believe, about seven hundred and fifty vaccinations a day. Um, I do think that, you know, between the communities involved, the region that we're in is, um, sort of Burlington, Lexington, going west. So, uh, if you think Concord, Acton, those are the communities that are in our public health region. Uh, but again, the, the, the question exists, um, amongst the group, just in terms of, even amongst our group, where will we locate it? Um, you know, where can we do it continuously? Um, do we have the manpower and resources, um, to, you know, do this, uh, every week? Uh, 'cause they want us to make a commitment indefinitely. Um, so that would, it doesn't mean that we're just, we would be able to do it for a week or two weeks. They want an indefinite, um, uh, commitment on the time. So, there's a lot of issues there. Uh, we've also, we're told, uh, from an inside source that, um, that the state sort of feels that Middlesex County's all set, uh, with vaccination sites. So, there wasn't a, um, uh, a lot of excitement on their, their part for a regional effort in this area. Uh, but we're still gonna continue to look at that with our counterparts, uh, in this region. Alongside, of course, uh, Board of Health, which is doing it with the health professionals in this region, uh, just to see if the possibility exists to do something, uh, regional that would be a little bit closer, uh, for our residents to be able to, to get their vaccinations. Uh, second item, and I know I updated the board about this, um, uh, Secretary Canely, uh, from the State uh, Office of Housing and Economic Development came out to the town, uh, to meet with us, uh, about our Max Works, MassWorks infrastructure grant that we received. Um, he typically only spends about an hour out in the communities, but he spent about two hours with us. Uh, we had a very small team because of COVID, uh, but I just wanna thank, um, Melissa Tentakas, Economic Development Director. I'm, I know I sent you guys pictures, and there was a little, uh, segment that B C A T did, um, on the visit, but we're able to sort of show them, um, all the development that is impacted by our pipeline and housing. Um, uh, from there, we took a tour, we went down to the town center, and we were able to talk to them about a different, uh, grant that Melissa had received for, that would be the placemaking in the town center, uh, the placemaking playbook, how do we enliven, uh, the public spaces in the town center? Uh, and from there, we, we, we took a ride down to, uh, you know, Norbloom, uh, housing site down there on Fourth. And from there, we went down to Millipore, and, uh, he was thoroughly impressed. Um, like I say, I wish, um, it would have been open to, to more folks to attend, 'cause, to see, you know, just what a great job Melissa did, uh, in setting that thing up. And again, they were tremendously gracious for us, and they seem to really be enjoying themselves, and we really do have, uh, quite a bit, uh, going on out here in Burlington, and they were very impressed by our presentation and all the projects and all the work that's being done out here. Uh, so that's second, and, you know, just sort of playing off of that, and I know we thanked lots of different folks, uh, around town during the pandemic, but, uh, B C A T, uh, we also, we really should thank B C A T. I mean, all this new stuff with virtual meetings, uh, they were able to get us up and running, um, in a manner that to broadcast these meetings, uh, to the public. I'm not sure if you've seen, uh, some of the, um, items they've done for us recently, and, and, you know, Secretary Canely's visit is a, a perfect example. Uh, they came down and did a wonderful segment, um, about his visit, which was really amazing, uh, for everybody in the community to, to sort of see what was going on there. And again, um, they do this for us on a regular basis, and they've really done a great job sort of adjusting to the pandemic, uh, technologic, techn- technology-wise, et cetera. And I know Rich says he likes to do those little segments, 'cause he gets a free lunch out of it. Uh, but, you know, I mean, just the work that, uh, the folks at B C A T do for us in terms of public relations, uh, is really amazing, and, um, their ability to sort of get up to COVID speed, uh, really, really quickly for us and, and, uh, help us with these meetings, um, has really been remarkable, so I wanted to thank them as well. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. You're on mute, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry about that, I was rambling. I was afraid. Uh, so, we need a motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
Go move.
Go move and second it. Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
The Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Tigges.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi. Meeting adjourned.